I didn't have to worry about it. It's just.
Watching them play against. Yes, we were forty of you.
No Panther Pride, this should be pretty quick today.
It was just fun to watch.
Budget hearing.
This is weird.
You can't have that many better.
I'm doing an XBA.
I'll start at seven thirty, about three or four days.
See, you've got options.
I do.
You are calling the show like normal.
Yeah.
No.
We all got a little blue thing.
I just brought it for Warren. It'll be freezing in here.
You didn't get the blue memo?
No, I got the pink.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. So we'll start with a word of prayer, then the pledge allegiance. So if you'd bow your head. Dear God, as we begin this new school year, we humbly seek your guidance and wisdom. Bless our students, teachers, administrators, and support staff with strength, patience, and understanding. Grant them the grace to navigate the challenges and embrace the opportunities that lie ahead. May this school year be filled with growth, learning, and a clear sense of community. We ask for your protection and provisions for all members of our school family. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the agenda for tonight.
There are no changes to the agenda for this evening.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Unanimous? Approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July fifteenth regular and executive meeting.
All second. Any questions? All in favor? Unanimous? Opportunity for public comment? There's no one. To the reports. Treasurers report first.
As you will see on the report, our fund balance to end of month was twenty million, seven hundred and three thousand, hundred and six dollars and thirty cents. And as a reminder, a good portion of that is the bond funds that can only be used for construction. CDs and investments that we have total three billion, five hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The interest that we received from the bank for the month totaled seventy-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Fund totals with CDs was twenty-four million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. The payroll claims being submitted for your approval total one million, fifty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. I will note that July, like ten months out of the year, is two pays. There each year is two months where we have three pays and we see a reduction in our funds as a result of that. We are in the midst of one of our three pay months, that is August. We've had two. We'll have a third here next week, and we'll go over kind of the impact of that, obviously, next month. Last thing is the vendor claims being submitted for your approval total one million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Some other things to mention, open enrollment, something that we've talked about in the past, closed the week before last. Our medical rates did come in right as we were having to open up enrollment, they got into us late this year. They were four and a half percent increase across the board, a little bit higher than you'd like to see, but it's also the lowest that we've had since I've been here, so we'll celebrate that. There's been no change to the board contribution at this time. This is usually a discussion point during negotiations over the last couple of years. The WA has asked us to split the difference. Again, obviously, something we'll discuss in more detail with them as we get into the collective bargaining season. I'll also give a quick update on Red Rover. We are what I'll call full implementation as of right now. The good news is we're seeing our sub-rate be very high. We're actually having subs complain about not being able to find open jobs as it's become more competitive because it's instantaneous on the jobs that open up. And we've done a good job, and I say we, but the finance office staff has done a really good job at increasing our subpool. Now, we've told the subs there'll be more openings as we get into the school year and teachers have more things that come up and we get into cold season, cold and flu season, that will obviously have an impact as well. The last thing I'll mention has been another thing that we have kind of continually come back to, and it's probably going to increase over the next month, and that is our SCA One, understanding and planning. I think we kind of turned a corner this last month, month and a half, where our discussions, our understanding shifted from, all right, how does this impact the state as a whole? What are the trends that we're going to see throughout the state? To how are we, Western School Corporation, going to be impacted? Because not every school is going to be impacted the same. And as our understanding shifts to that, we need to have more discussions with you so that you have some understanding on some of the decisions that you're going to have to make. And to kind of front-load your ability to absorb and understand some of this information, I'm going to give you right now four key points that I think most of what you hear will attach to one or more of these key points. Some of what I'll go over today during the budget presentation, you'll be able to attach to, again, one or more of these key things. During our session next week, when we're bringing in some of our financial advisors, again, I think you'll be able to say, all right, what he or she is talking about really speaks to this of those four points that, again, I'll give you now. The first of those four is SCA provides a number of increasing taxpayer deductions over the next six years that will decrease our net AV and in turn, the growth of our operations revenue significantly. And we'll go over what those numbers are actually being projected, but they are significant, unfortunately. The second point is our tax rate must go up in order to bring in our planned rates of revenue, i.e. levies. However, just because the tax rate goes up does not necessarily mean taxpayers are paying more, especially within this first year. Number three, we must shift strategies away from managing to a tax rate to managing to a revenue amount, i.e. a levy. And then fourth and final, our debt service tax rate will likely go above the seventy cent threshold at some point in that time. Right now, we're looking at 2029 is the projected year. When that happens, we cannot go to the community for any more money to purchase bonds without a referendum. And that's something that we'll have to plan for and kind of plan around a little bit. I won't go any more detail on it right now. Again, we'll have some more later on during the budget presentation, but I think those four points, as I increase my own understanding of it, is where you can link on some of the information that you're going to be getting now and over the coming weeks.
So what we can do is we can have Kyle send those out to those four points so you can kind of ingest that over the next couple of weeks. And then, like he said, on the twenty-eighth, we'll have our meeting with Mr. Quakem Bush and Stiefel to take a little bit deeper dive into that. So those will start becoming our talking points that we'll be building things around as we start navigating the challenges that we're going to be facing.
You've received my supporting documentation. Any questions? I'm willing to have you answer, otherwise I submit for your approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
All second. Any questions for Kyle? No, thank you, Kyle. All in favor? Unanimous? All right, directors of sessional learning.
You've had the opportunity to look at my report. This last few weeks has really consumed my time with the Power School Special Programs, the state IEP system, just sitting in a lot of webinars, working with our North Central Roundtable coordinators, trying to get the most up-to-date information on changes and how they are rolling those out and working with our teachers to get those to them as quickly as I can. But we're still working on that. Seems to be every day there are new changes to it, new updates. We've had, when I made my report, we had twenty-two move-in IEP students. I think we're up to twenty-five now, and I think we had four or five that came from ABA facilities, so no, not necessarily having services yet. So just something to think about, having moving forward, they haven't had those school services, so just new to the school. And then as far as titling grants, just working on getting everything submitted, the title budget, working on that, that's due towards the middle of September. Just working through all the little hiccups along the way. Any questions on my report?
How's the interview going?
You know, it's been better. We've had a better response to paraprofessionals. I think we have maybe a couple more spots that we need to fill, but we've hired some really good people for those positions so far.
Lindsey?
Yes.
On the Title III guidance by the state, was there anything new in that?
No, nothing new, but that just supports our English language.
Okay, thank you.
I know last week started NWEA testing.
Yes.
And I assume that's going on through this week as well?
Yes.
How's that going so far?
It seems to be going really good. I don't think we've had a lot of hiccups with technology with that, and everybody seems to be moving forward. I know there were some different dates as far as middle school started a little bit earlier than everybody else, and then making sure everybody had iPads and all the logistics, but so far, so good.
Thank you, Lindsey. Craig?
Good evening. I'll actually just piggyback off of Lindsey's a little bit in regards to iPads. We did deploy iPads. Everybody got theirs as of last Wednesday, the primary was the last building to deploy. We did a little bit of different this year. We shifted deployment. It helped with responding to issues with just getting schools started. High school, middle school, we got theirs first. Intermediate got theirs on that next Monday, and then primary got theirs on Tuesday, or Wednesday. But that allowed us to kind of deploy in phases instead of all at once. All at once is a lot for my group to be able to get everything going. I do want to mention that we, which is a good thing, the enrollment's up this year. That being said, we were short about, right now, about two cases for students. So we're down two students right now to not have an iPad because of cases which should be coming tomorrow. What we've been doing is those who've withdrawn, we take theirs and assign them to a new student. So new students to the district within the last, you know, couple of days, maybe without teachers are kind of adjusting some of their things right now to be able to balance that out. But tomorrow, I'm hoping the shipment of cases come in and we'll be rolling again at full numbers, which is a good thing. We have had a couple of issues. We had with our, we got a new MDM this year which manages the iPads. That's been going pretty well. We liked that application. We did have an issue last week with, it looked like the internet was an issue, which actually it was our provider changed something on the backend that did not let us know. So Stephen and I fought a battle for hours this first Monday, Tuesday last week, fighting a battle that was actually a different issue that was not on our side. So caused some issues, but hey, we're back up and running, everything's better on that part, too. And then also the website, it's still in progress, and Natalie and I are still working through the details for that and getting that ready to hopefully release in November.
So Craig, with our increase in students, how many iPads do you have back or held back extra, or do you have?
How many do we have for spares? We normally keep about twenty to thirty, not very, we don't want a lot because that's a lot sitting on a shelf. But I actually bought the exact number of cases, well, I buffered about ten-plus cases from last year's numbers. That's where we're shorter, the cases for three through twelve.
On the website, is it going to be like smartphone compatible?
Yeah. Yes.
That always had distortion.
Yes. Yep, yep.
Anything else?
Craig?
Yeah.
I had someone ask me about finding the school board meeting online.
Uh-huh.
And they said they had read somewhere that it was going to be on our website to go there and visit.
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay, they couldn't find it.
Yeah, it's under school board and then live meeting.
Oh, well, that seems pretty easy.
Yeah, it's just, and then, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's underneath there. So right at the top, and then it drops down, and it'll say live school board meeting. Or recorded, the record is right below it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Barrett, your turn.
All right, thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Good evening to everybody. We've been pretty busy in the Assistant Superintendent's Office here the last month. Just an update on safety. Within the first twenty days, there's certain safety drills that we have to do, and we've completed all of those, so hats off to all four buildings for getting those taken care of. Also, our SROs this year, we've rolled out kind of a checklist for them to work on every week while they're here, so that way we know kind of what they're checking, what they're doing, and also fits into our strategic plans. So they've all been filling those out, and we're very appreciative of that. Also, updates on transportation. Big thanks to Cindy McQuerry, Tracy, who's our bus mechanic, Craig, all of our drivers and staff. We've had a very good start. I always kind of gauge that by I'm really not worried how long it takes kids to get home, as long as they're safe. And we didn't leave any kindergarteners on the porch without their parents, so that's always a big win for us. So hats off to everybody who pitched in on that. So things have been going well. I know drop-off and pickup with our pickup parent line, that's been going very smoothly, so hats off to all the teachers and staff and administrators who've been helping with that. That's always a big part, and if those aren't working, usually you guys hear about that. So we're really happy that that's going well. Updates on curriculum to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Lindsey was saying. Our NWEA, a lot of the buildings are taking those baseline tests right now, and we'll have some data to share with you guys next meeting, along with our PLC data sheets, we'll have that to share with you as well in September. So pending your question, that's my board report for all.
I just want to say, Barrett, I've heard a lot of really positive comments about Transportation Department, how helpful everyone's been and how smoothly it's going.
It's a big undertaking, but yeah, hats off to all the team.
Mark? Thank you, Barrett.
Thank you. You've had an opportunity to see my report. Just a couple of highlights. We're still monitoring class sizes and enrollment coming in. Right now, we're currently sitting over twenty-five hundred students. Last year, we were at twenty-four ninety-two at this time, which was about a plus eleven for us. That was the first year that we saw an increase in our enrollment over the last, like, six, seven years. And so hopefully, we're going to have two years now of an increased enrollment. Wanted to thank a lot of the individuals that were involved with our new teacher orientation to make that a meaningful time for our new staff, and there was a lot of work that went into that with our finance department, our technology department, Nate, our whole staff came together to put a lunch together, t-shirts, you name it, they did it. So just really want to show my appreciation for that. Also, I met with Senator Donato and Senator Baldwin. There was a group of us in Senator Donato's Region Eighteen to have a conversation about Senate Bill One and the impacts that we're seeing in our district. I thought it was a very productive meeting. There's still a lot of unknowns, and I think that's on both ends of the table. And so I go back on Thursday down to the State House to have continued discussions with a number of state leaders there, as well with the legislative group with the Superintendent's Association. So hopefully, we'll start making some headway with those changes, and it's not a process that's over. I think everybody understands that there's some things that need to change there. Also, we've continued having construction updates from Burton Co. Right now, we're kind of at that phase where we're cleaning up in areas and doing some finishing touches. When it rains, we get to figure out where the leaks still are, and so like, the other day, we had some leaks, and so those are getting fixed and patched. We are having coping put around the building. If you've noticed, there's the bronze that's going around the building now, so you're going to see some of that. There's a little bit of brickwork that's still happening. The electrical work is done for this year, except for when they come back over fall break. So there's just going to be some touch-up things, but where we're seeing like roof leaks right now are where they had to stop and kind of finish things. Then they'll reconvene next year and do the rest of the roof spots that they weren't able to finish this summer. And then ultimately, you know, this has been a good start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and so I want to thank all the people that have put in tireless hours. I mean, it takes a lot of time and a lot of energy. I don't think people realize the amount of time, you know, when we see people in the Transportation Department that's here at three AM to make sure that kids are on buses at seven AM. You know, people don't necessarily see the behind-the-scenes things, and so that same thing with custodians and teachers and administrators. And so just very thankful for all the people that put in the hard work to make the experience for our kids and our families a positive experience here. So that's a summary, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mark. To the budget workshop. Wait, are you going to do the top?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. We don't have Panther Pride or Mission Moment, but we did get notification from the IHSA that we were top sportsmanship school by scoring a certain amount of points, I believe it was over a hundred points, to receive that award. So Aaron wanted me to share that with you, and we're really proud of our student athletes and coaches to be able to be given credit as showing good sportsmanship in our competitions.
You said that was like one of twenty-some schools that received it, right?
No, there's more than that.
I'm more than one, sorry.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot, but you know what? We're going to take that award. We lose or draw, baby.
All right, now we're up to the budget workshop.
All right, budget workshop. Purpose of this, I think, is twofold. Number one, to inform you, the board, where the direction of the twenty-sixth budget is headed, and then second, most importantly, get your permission to advertise our rates and requested appropriations for the budget, and then also get permission to advertise for the bus replacement plan and the capital projects plan. And the last thing I'll ask you to do upon the conclusion of this presentation is to vote to grant us permission to advertise. As far as the budget goes, the simple explanation of it is don't spend more than you have. The complex explanation of it is all the different parts and data points that go into it, and that's that graph that you see there on the right. The state has a number of forms that we complete that kind of feed back and forth into each other that then give us the forms we need to advertise and to approve the budget. So if you start there on the left, the Form One is what you probably think of when you think of a budget, what you want to spend and where you want to spend it. The Form Two has to do with our revenue projections for the remainder of the current 2025 calendar year, but then for the whole of 2026. It, however, does not include property taxes. The current year financial worksheet allows us and DLGF to project out where our cash balances, fund balances, will be at the end of the current year. The debt worksheet is how much we will pay in our bond payments for both this year and the next year, being 2026. Again, the data points from all those feed into the Form Four B form, which then inputs our property taxes and allows us and the DLGF to determine cash balances at the end of 2025 and to advertise our property tax rate and levy. The output of that, then, is the Form Three, which is what we use to advertise. It's our notice to taxpayers. And then the Form Four is what we'll ask you to adopt. It's the resolution adopting the budget that we'll put before you in October. As far as the timeline goes for the budget process, I won't go over under each of these points individually, but I'll point out what I'll say are the three big events. The first of these is the budget workshop slash permission to advertise. That is the here and now, that's what we're doing today. The second is the budget hearing. That's what we'll do in September. And then the third is the actual adoption of the budget. That's what we will do in October. Same information, but more along a timeline format. What I'll point out with this is what happens after this meeting, after you give us permission to advertise. I will upload the necessary forms onto Gateway, as well as work with Craig on posting them on our website for our rates and levies and for the bus replacement plan and the capital assets plan. The culmination of all this, if we jump to the end of the timeline in December, will be us receiving the seventeen eighty-two notice, which is our approved budgets and our amounts as approved by the DLGF. We do have an ability to respond, most schools do, to get the levies and rates exactly kind of pinpointed where they want them. The framework of who does what in this process, in this timeline, our responsibility is to complete the state prescribed forms that went over three slides ago. We have to advertise our hearing, advertise our capital assets plan, our bus replacement plan, post those things to the website as well. We need to hold the public hearing, which again, will be in September, and then in October, we will adopt the budget. By statute, it has to be done by November first and then submitted to the DLGF via Gateway by November seventh. We'll be way before those dates. As far as what the state's responsibility is, they review and modify our budget as needed. They set the final tax rates, and they deliver the budget order that is that seventeen eighty-two notice I previously mentioned. Similar to 2025, we will advertise high. The rates and levies that you're going to see, you'll think, well, those seem high. They are intentionally so. We advertise high, and then we wait for the DLGF to work us down as our net AV is certified, and then they submit seventy-two notice, which we may further tweak and alter down, especially when it comes to debt service, to get the exact levy and rates that we want. As far as the funds that we are budgeting for, you've heard me before, call these the big four funds, being the education fund, debt service, rainy day, and the operations fund. That arrow is in the middle to remind you that money can move between the funds. Typically, it takes a resolution and vote by the board, but money can flow between those three funds. Debt service is the exception to that rule. It is more of a locked silo that can be used for one sole purpose, and that is to make our bond payments. I will mention with this, these aren't our only four funds. That was a surprise a few board meetings ago that we have more funds than these four. We actually have sixty-one funds right now that have money in them. Some of those are clearing accounts. If we cut away the clearing accounts, it's about fifty-three funds. But these four funds is where most of our money lives, and they are, and that's why the state has more guidelines on them as far as how we get permission to spend, and because two of the four are funded through taxpayer money, how we get our levies and tax rates so that that can occur. Going over each of those four funds, starting with the education fund, as a reminder, this one, and I just stated this again, is not funded by property taxes. Rather, the revenue we receive from this is from the state. It's based primarily upon our student count, or ADM. To a lesser extent, things like CTE numbers, special education numbers, honors diploma numbers also play a role, but student ADM is going to be by and far the biggest factor. There are two count dates where the state determines what our student population is, one October second and the other in February. With the revenue that we do receive from the state, we can transfer up to fifteen percent from the education fund to the operations fund, and without that, it'd be hard for the operations fund to remain solvent. Fortunately, we are able to stay under that fifteen percent. We're the only school in Howard County that is under that full fifteen percent. We transfer fourteen percent. If we were to tap into that extra one percent, you're looking at a two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar extra transfer that would occur that we have never had to do up to this point in time. In October, when you do approve the budget, we will also reapprove the resolution for allowing that transfer to occur up to fifteen percent. As far as what we are seeking approval from for the DLGF for our 2026 budget, total being twenty million, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars.
Something to add to Kyle's note here with the education fund, some of the additional dollars that come in through special education, or especially CTE, are becoming more and more challenging to track, to know exactly what we're getting paid because those are changing as well. And so that's just something to be aware of, that what might be a high-need course that students would take this year might not be a high need next year, and also they're changing some of the information.
Something to add to Kyle's note here with the education fund, some of the additional dollars that come in through special education, or especially CTE, are becoming more and more challenging to track, to know exactly what we're getting paid, because those are changing as well. And so that's just something to be aware of, that what might be a high need course that students would take this year might not be a high need next year. And also, they're changing some of the information for us when it comes to funding, filing your seals. So the education seal, the employment seal, the enlistment seal. So some of that's going to be changing as well.
As far as what we're spending the money on, if it's in the education fund, it's got to be tied to instruction. As far as where the appropriations live within the fund, if you cut out, and these numbers, these percentages do cut out, the transfer from education to ops. It includes the smaller transfers we have to make to help fund, invest, and Kasek. But again, the operations transfer is not included. So you're looking at almost 70% of the total money that's appropriated is spent on salaries. 20% is benefits, social security, medical insurance, dental vision, all those things. 5% is going to be supplies. One thing I'll mention now, too, is one of the new expenses that, this is the first year, and I say this year, 2025, 2026 will be the second then, that we have in the education fund that we haven't before is curriculum. Before, curriculum always had its separate fund, what was identified as O900. But as of January 1st of this year, the state said we had to transfer those funds. So you've got about an additional half million dollar appropriation that we have for curriculum costs that now live in the education fund. Debt service, what we are seeking approval for is $4,869,007. It's exactly what we need to make our bond payments. The maximum estimated funds to be raised that we're asking for totals $5,141,288. You may be asking, why are you asking for more money than you plan to spend? Eventually, we won't. But we ask for the max amount, let the DLGF work us down. We may work it down further, relying on some of our cash balances to make our payments to, again, keep our levy and rate where we want them to. And we have a financial team, specifically, you've heard us mention Stiefel, you'll talk to them next week, that we rely very heavily on this to really pinpoint this and get exactly what we, we want. They're very good at this process. Been a good addition to our team now for about a year, year and a half, we brought them on board. So as far as what we're paying for, the bonds that you see listed on the mid bottom half of the slide is what we are making payments on. There's a couple of those that within the next year, year and a half, will be coming off the books, and we'll have to stop making payments, or we'll make our final payment. The operations fund, the budget that we are requesting is 8.2 million. The maximum estimated funds to be raised for 2026 is $4,592,000. Sorry, $4,592,201. Now, as I'll explain moving on, that is not what we will receive, because we are a high circuit breaker district. We have a levy, and then the circuit breaker comes out of that, and then we receive something that is much less, unfortunately. But that is what we will ask for. That's 4% more than what we asked for last year. The DLGF and state says you're capped at a 4% increase. You can't go beyond that. With this budget, the 8.2 million, and this is the same conversation that I didn't mention with the education budget, we're asking for more than what we need. We always ask for more in case some of the variables change, and they will, and we need more. And having that excess appropriation saves us the hassle of having to go to the DLGF and getting additional appropriation. We will get permission for that budget, but I'll work off an internal budget that's more based on what is the exact projected revenue we expect to receive for that year. And I'll show you this in one of the last slides. And we monitor that revenue, projections of the revenue, monthly to see, all right, can we increase our budget for operations? And maybe spend something that we weren't expecting? Or do we need to decrease it because our ADM dropped on that second count? And that's something that happens a lot, of student count drops, and we have to decrease the budget as a result. I'll mention this for some of our board members that have been around longer than others. You probably remember the pre-2019 days where there was an operations budget, but you had separate budgets of capital projects, transportation, and bus replacement. As a reminder, the operations budget is all these former budgets combined. We've stated that 15% transfer comes from education to operations. Other significant sources of revenue for operations is going to be primarily property taxes, what are called some miscellaneous taxes that I'll show you later. Another significant source of revenue that we've been in from the last couple of years, two and a half years maybe, is interest rates have been up. And for that reason, because of our cash balances, we've been able to bring more money into operations. It is expected, if you watch the news, that starting within this month, maybe next, the interest rate will start to work down, which means that interest rate that we report out each month will also be less. Items of note that are included within the operations fund, the capital assets and projects plan, all those expenses live in operations, and the bus replacement plan is going to live in operations. And I'm not, I was going to turn it over to Barrett, but not yet, one more slide. As far as where the money's being spent, you see the pie here, percentage wise, of where our expenses are. You're looking about 40, 41% in salaries, 11% in benefits. You've got 4% in purchase services, 22, 23% in supplies, and then about 5 or 6% that is property related. As I did mention, the bus replacement plan does live within operations. One of the things that we will do in the coming months is get our bus replacement plan approved. And so that you know what we are asking for, I'm going to bring this up and turn it over to Barrett.
Perfect. Thank you, Kyle. I appreciate it. You'll notice that the buses have gone up if you've been doing this for a while. We try to forecast about a 10% increase every couple of years. I do know this year, in talking with two vendors, which would be International and Bluebird, they've told us, end of September, there will be an 8% to 10% increase on this number due to what they call tariff increases. So that's going to impact a lot of things. But as you can see, these buses are replacing ones that are back from 2008 and also our SPVs. So I, at last look, about a week ago, both of those school buses have around 158,000 miles on them, and the SPV, which goes on a lot of trips, has close to 200,000 miles. So they've, they've done a great job, but it just comes time that we have to replace them. So as you can see, in the five-year time period, we're replacing school buses after, they usually have a life of about 13 or 14 years.
Giving you just a perspective, when I first did the bus replacement plan seven years ago, SPV was $65,000, and they're $120,000 today.
So keep in mind, as you see our operations revenue projected to decrease, our expenses and our vendors don't decrease what they're billing us for. Side note, going into the capital projects plan now, which is what you see here, this first tab is our capitals, capital acquisition, excuse me, a lot of just general lines for supplies, equipment, furniture that lives within the budget, both for equipment and for technology broken out among the buildings. We've also got some items here at the bottom, in working with John, he recognized that the maintenance department could either use, a lot of times for safety purposes, or that need replaced that he'd like to see added over the next few years. So we are trying to find ways to fit those into the budget, if not this year, over the next, you know, three to four coming years. As far as capital projects go, as I scroll down this, some of it should look familiar as far as being grouped under roofing among the buildings, electrical, and the envelope. So this is very much tied to the construction that is going on outside of these walls and these windows, not just now, but in the coming years. There's also some lines for what we budget for on general construction and improvement, a line for specifically athletics as well. Navigating back to the slide, exiting the operations fund and moving into the rainy day fund. The requested budget that we're asking for for rainy day is $400,000. We are requesting an appropriation to spend with no intent on spending it. It's there more as a safety to where if something would happen, or strategically, we think that it would make sense for an expense to go towards this, we have it there, and you don't have to go through a lengthy process to request an additional appropriation on the backend. This has been the custom of Western to have this $400,000 sitting there in case we need it. The rainy day fund in general is for, again, what it's called for, for the unexpected if and when that occurs. Right now, our rainy day fund is at $1 million. The revenue from that has all been generated from transfers over the years. We've kind of worked it to that point that we're comfortable with where it's at. There's no revenue source that it has from property taxes or from the state. It's all from transfers, usually from operations. As far as our tax rate goes, in this chart, you can see an historical timeline of the last four or five years of where our tax rate has been. And we have two separate tax rates, one for debt service, again, how we make our bond payments, and one for operations. Those add or culminate into the total tax rate that we can see where it's been over the last four years. Western has been a school corporation that has been tolerant, and our community has been tolerant of the tax rate going up and down over the years. However, over the last two years, we've had a lot of discussions about, all right, let's, let's settle on a tax rate that we think is responsible and maintain that tax rate for the foreseeable future. And working with the board, the tax rate that we agreed upon was that $114. And we planned, significantly planned, and projected to do what we need to do to maintain that. That was in the pre-SEA1 world. We now live in a post-SEA1 world, where, as you're going to find, that's not going to be possible any longer. And as we look at this chart, one of the things you'll notice, if you look down here at the bottom, is our net AV. And if we even go back farther down the timeline, you'd see that the net AV has consistently grown. And that eases, when that grows, that eases the tax burden on the taxpayer. What we're seeing as a result of SEA1 is we expect our net AV to actually decrease from 2025 to 2026. Now, I'll mention our net AV has not been certified and communicated to us yet. Typically, I do have this, and I can pretty well project out within three decimal points what our tax rates will be. Because they haven't given to us yet, I can't do that. This right here, and working with some of our advisors, excuse me, is the number that we expect. I have been hearing from the counties that have already gotten theirs, and it's coming in a little bit higher. So we're optimistic that could be higher. But before I explain this further, I'll point out what we will advertise and put our notes to our taxpayers are these numbers here from the projected. Again, those should look high. They are intentionally high. We'll let the DLGF work us down as our net AV is officially certified, and that will come through in the communication between us and them. If our net AV would come in at this projected amount, and our levies would stay the same, which operations isn't going to change, we're capped at that. Debt service might change a little bit as we have conversations about future planning and working with our financial planners with Stiefel. But right now, if the net AV was that, that's where I would see our total tax rate. Now, to show you how dependent this is on the net AV, I'm going to go to a spreadsheet where I've built in some scenarios, and I'll make this larger so that you can see it. Same chart here, you see this $800 million. If we change this to what we received last year, the $806 million, watch what happens to our projected tax rate. We go from $117,42 to $116,500 if we just maintain what we had. But usually, we go up. And working with some of our policy experts, pre-SEA1, what the NAV was projected to be was $854 million. If that came through, watch what happens to our tax rate. We go from $117 to $110. So our tax rate is very much governed by what this comes in at if we want to maintain our levies. So what does this mean for the individual taxpayer? For that, we've built out three different scenarios, sorry, four different scenarios. Let me get this right sized. So I was making some changes here, and I did not put it back. All right, so we see four homes valued from anywhere from $100,000 to $400,000 for their gross AV. And you can see in this first column for each home what their 2025 taxes looked like versus what the 2026 taxes would be projected to look like. Now, this holds two very important variables stable. Those variables are the gross AV and the local tax rate. For that local tax rate, I've just used $2, which if you look at Harrison, Honey Creek, and Monroe, they're all right around there. In 2025, we made up of $114 of that to put it in perspective. But their total tax rate, again, would have been $2. So if you keep those two variables stable, which they won't be, but just for simplicity's sake, if we keep those two variables stable, you see how much less each of the taxpayers would be paying pre and post-SEA1. Now, those variables are not stable. If we increase our tax rate by 4 cents, which you see the tax rate's gone up for 2026, you can see that each of the taxpayers is still paying less in 2026 than they would have in 2025. Now, Home 1 and Home 2 are not paying as much less, but they're still paying less. Home 3 and 4 changed 0. And the reason they changed 0 is because they've already hit their circuit breaker. The state says that a homeowner can't pay more than 1% of their gross AV. So once you hit that, regardless of what the tax rate increases to, you don't pay any more. For a farmer, it's 2%. For a business owner, it is 3%. Now, the other variable, though, is gross AV. And these two homeowners, 3 and 4, are not going to pay more unless their gross AV goes up. And if we look at this chart, I'll make this bigger so you can see it, over the last four or five years, gross AV has spiked and spiked considerably. And that's been the driving factor of why property taxes have gone up. So if somebody complains, well, the school increased the property tax rate, and my property taxes went up. If we did, that was a small portion of it, and most of them, because our circuit breaker is so high, are capped by the circuit breaker. So the reason their taxes went up is because their gross AV went up. And this is why people complained to the legislatures that, hey, why am I paying all this property tax money? My GAV keeps skyrocketing. So they've found ways to increase the net AV by giving homeowners, businesses, and farmers increased tax deductions. So if we do increase the GAV by, let's just say, a very modest 3%, you see what happens. Everybody is paying still less, not as much less, but they're still paying less. If that increases by 3% to 5%, again, they're all still paying less, but not as much less. If we go to 7%, still paying less, homeowner 1, just 6 cents less. If we jump to 10%, that's where you're going to see that in almost all the cases, all but one, the homeowner is paying a little bit more in 2026 than they are in 2025. So that goes back to those key points I gave you at the very first, during my update, just because our tax rate goes up doesn't necessarily mean taxpayers are paying more. The other part of this-
It depends on what home you live in, right?
It does. Yeah, the value of your home is going to definitely impact it. Another thing that's going to impact it is this supplemental homestead credit, which is new. There's a reason that number doesn't exist in 2025. What this says is after you have your net tax bill, then you will reduce it further by the lesser of $300 or 10% of your net property tax bill. And this, then, is a credit for the homeowner. It is a loss for the taxing unit, i.e. schools. And when you look at our circuit breaker numbers, which are projected to absolutely skyrocket, this is the primary purpose, is because this is new this year. There's also- There's also some additional tax credits if you're over sixty-five. Harry, you're there, aren't you? You'll get additional credit. If you're disabled, you'll get additional credit. If you're a disabled veteran, you'll get additional credit that's not shown on this. Obviously, we can't go that far in the detail on this. But going back to the slide deck, going further into what this is going to mean as it pertains to the circuit breaker, here you see the historical trends of what our circuit breaker has done since 2019. And you'll see that it has very steadily climbed. In 2025, our levy was that four-point-four million. But our circuit breaker loss was the, I'll call it one-point-three million, obviously I'm rounding. But then if we jump up to the projections for 2026, our approved levy went up the max four percent. Our circuit breaker jumps to almost one-point-seven million dollars. And the primary reason for that is going to be that tax credit. Now, the other part of this, and this is where things get compound complex, is part of this tax credit has to be absorbed by the debt service fund, at least for this first year. We think it's an oversight on the legislature that they'll correct this next session, but for right now, about two-hundred thousand dollars additional, it's not shown here, will hit the debt service fund. Once they make the expected correction, then that one-point-six million jumps, increases by two-hundred thousand. So you see how our operations revenues are projected to go down, or one of the reasons why they're projected to go down. So if we look at our operations tax comparison from 2025 to 2026, in that first column, you're obviously seeing 2025. Again, you see that property tax levy of the four-point-four million dollars, the circuit breaker of the between one-point-three, one-point-four million, and then what we actually expect by the end of the year to bring into our accounts. There's also some miscellaneous taxes that are obviously less that help to supplement that revenue. So you see total what we expect to receive for 2025. When we use the DLGF forms to project out what we're going to see in 2026, yes, the levy increases by four percent. But now, the quote "normal" circuit breaker increases to, you know, it's pushing one-point-five million dollars. The tax credit onto operations is about a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. So you see in property taxes alone, we are projecting that we will receive a hundred twenty-three to a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars less. Now, the saying of the legislature is with SEA One, they wanted to see a decrease to the increase. They didn't want schools to get less money. They just didn't want to see the growth that we had seen the last few years. However, there are some schools who are actually going to see less in year one. Unfortunately, we are one of about, I think they're projecting seventy schools that will actually see less from 2025 in property taxes to 2026. As far as those miscellaneous taxes go, you can see we're projecting about seventeen to eighteen thousand dollars less. So total, with all taxes combined, you're looking at about a hundred forty-one thousand dollars less in 2026. Now, the debt service tax credit, I'm sorry, yeah, the debt service hit on the tax credit are because the tax credit is not shown in that. If and when that comes into operations, that hundred forty-one thousand would increase by two-hundred, two-hundred-plus thousand dollars. Budget summary. The advertised numbers, the numbers in the middle column are the numbers that I've gone over. The column at the right is actually what I am projecting our internal budget will go off of. Again, we ask for more than we need because variables change, and we want to have some cushion there if we are fortunate enough to be able to increase our internal budget. But our internal budget, at least for education operations, is tied to what we expect to receive in revenue. And again, we're constantly altering those forecasts, and then we alter the budget, tweak the budget as a result. But right now, in the education fund, we're looking at an internal budget of about nineteen-point-two million. Debt service is exactly the same advertised projected because it's exactly what we need to make our bond payments. The operations budget, we're looking at a little under seven-point-one million dollars. That's less than what we were for 2025, or are for 2025, for reasons that I think are becoming obvious. The rainy day fund, we asked for that four-hundred thousand dollars. Our internal budget is zero. We're not projecting that we use any of that, but it's there in case we need it. Last slide that I use as analogy, last year that I'll use again, have a plan, work the plan, plan for the unexpected. Projecting out of where the year goes is kind of like projecting the path of a hurricane. You know, a few months in, you've got a pretty good idea. Your cone is pretty small. But as you get farther out and the variables become more volatile, there is the opportunity for the plan to have to make amends or to make modifications to the plan. And that is what we've always done with the budget and what we will continue to do. We hope that you don't see that path all the way to the right where you think it'll be here, but then it takes the far-right turn. Unfortunately, though, SEA One may be taking us in that unexpected direction. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. I do ask that if there's no questions, or when you're finished asking questions, you do hold a vote that gives me permission to advertise the levy rates, bus replacement plan, and the capital projects plan.
I'll make a motion to approve that we advertise.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Yeah, so this is a great job, bringing this down, and your graphs are great to show this in simple terms. If we do go above the dollar fourteen, like, that has been our goal in the past, I just want to make sure I understand, that's going to fall on the backs of homeowner one and homeowner two, right? Because none of that will impact homeowner three and four.
So it's not as, it's not as simple as that. But if, yes, if you've hit your circuit breaker, and the increased tax rate alone is not going to impact them. But if their gross AV goes up, which it will, they'll pay more as well.
Sure. AVs, two separate things.
You are correct.
That's the part that bothers me. If we abandon our dollar fourteen, it's going to hit homeowners one and two.
I worry about the same.
How does our circuit breaker compare to other?
We're high.
Very.
We're very high.
Quick question. I saw in some of the numbers earlier that there might be three-million-dollar differences somewhere, but we might be able to move some from operations to education or vice versa. We might be able to offset some of that number to where what they're dropping us, we'll be able to catch it up with some other funds, moving things around a little bit, maybe?
You know, going back to that pie of the four, the big four funds, you saw the era where funds can move. We don't like to do that any more than what's necessary. You know, we transfer fourteen percent of the state revenue from education to operations. You know, we've always got the ability to tap into that extra one percent. That's not something that we want to do. That's something we will continue to work very hard to avoid because that's less money that we can put into salary and benefits for, not just teachers, but for any position that's tied to instruction. But there are a number of levers, I'll call them that, levers, that as we face tension on our revenue streams that we can look to, that we're kind of planning around right As hard as, you see that reduction in revenue from twenty-five to twenty-six, that's sustainable. Where it gets harder is in the years to come. And I think this is what you'll see next week with some of our financial planners. Twenty-twenty-eight is the big hit. Twenty-twenty-eight, we get hit, and schools around the state, it's not just us. But we and the other Howard County schools are going to get very hard in 2028.
Kyle, I appreciate you building our capacity to kind of sort of understand this. And I'm wondering, too, as we go forward, how we can help support you because everybody needs to understand this to some extent, or have the talking points. So you don't have to know this now, but as you go, how can we help you?
You know, I think it's having the understanding that it's, it kind of takes a tribe and a team at this point in time. And we brought in a team from Stifel, Jeff Quachan-Bush, our bond counsel, Policy Analytics is another group that we are working with as of late. These are the experts that we have to rely upon because they have the ability, the tools, and the know-how to drill it down further than what we can, to where we can look at it, and I, you know, very broad, they can look at it through a microscope and give us a lot more information and detail that allow us to make plans and decisions that result from the numbers you see.
And I think it's also something to know that we all have to have the flexibility to pivot as things change, as we talked a lot about the planning and ideas that we had pre-SEA One, how that kind of got train-wrecked. And so having that flexibility to pivot, but then also, as we build this capacity with our financial advisors, that we create a consistent message that we can share with others, just like the four points that Kyle pointed out at the very beginning of his report, those are the things that we're going to have to consistently be able to share. And then also know that if a rule changes in April, that our message may change as well. It's not that we're trying to do something wrong, it's just that the rules of the game change, and that's unfortunately, and Kyle and I use that term a lot, of compound complex, because that's exactly what it is.
And that's something that's been communicated to us, is the legislature is not done. Our ASBO director, I think, put it best, he said, if you use the baseball analogy and you think that this property tax reform is a nine-inning baseball game, he said, we're in inning two or three. So there are additional changes coming. So, you know, we have to plan for what we know, but we also, to, you know, look at the slide, you know, we have a plan, we're working that plan, we've also got a plan for the unexpected, and as new rules are made, as new data comes in, as Mark said, we need to pivot.
This would be a great presentation for lawmakers.
Well, they could be watching on live now.
That'd be great.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you have to look for the advertising, sorry. Need a motion.
We need a motion a second.
So, all in favor, sorry. Been so long, I have to pause.
All right, up to curricular review. Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Kyle. So, asking for the board's approval for a thirty-day review on the high school human sexuality curriculum. This is actually something that we are working on, and you'll see in NEOLA policy as some of the state laws have changed, so we're putting that out for review. I believe the middle schools will probably be next month where we've used CPR, which is creating positive relationships, for probably a decade or more. But because of this new law, we want to make sure that we still put that out for everybody and go through the approval process, even though we've been using it for the past ten years. So just asking for your approval on a thirty-day review.
I'll move. I'll move the second curriculum.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, who wrote this curriculum?
This was worked by Mr. Bennington, who is our health teacher at the high school.
So he wrote that curriculum? We're looking at it?
He's been using different resources, and I believe there's a bibliography on that, so that's what he's used.
Okay, so I was naming, right? Came from the state or came from a-
No, those are things that he's-
Publisher or what?
And some of our teachers do that, they create their own curriculum, and he's looked through numerous amounts of material and networked with other health teachers around the state to come up with the material.
And I don't know if there's anything else that you'd want to add, Steve, to that? Because I know you've worked with him.
He started last year, so it looked like he was blindsided, and it was something that he focused on. He's just a very good educator, so like Mark said, he networked and worked hard to put together curriculum that he did for his kids.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Yes. Guaranteed energy-saving contract.
Yeah, so asking for your approval for, let's see here, for the guaranteed energy-savings contract, so, now, is it not up there? Okay, I'll just read the letter here that is, I think, some of you probably have in your board doc. Oh, there it is. "The WSC administrative team recommends that the school board trustees award the guaranteed energy-saving contract request for qualifications and request for proposal to Viragee. We've identified through the evaluation process as the most qualified and responsive provider demonstrating the ability to deliver cost savings, energy efficiency improvements, and facility enhancements aligned with the district's long-term goals and needs. Pending board approval, the administration will proceed with the planning and negotiations with Viragee to ensure the best value and outcome for the district are presented to the board at a later date." So thank you for your consideration.
I'll make a motion to-
Cindy first. Cindy's first.
Motion, we accept Viragee as our guaranteed energy savings.
I'll second.
You're second. Any questions?
We looked at three vendors.
Could you tell us who the other two were?
Yes. Snyder Electric, you've got to get them right here, there's an acronym on one of them, so Snyder Electric and CMTA, along with Viragee. Three groups.
Any other questions? All in favor? Yes.
Transportation routes and safety review. All right, Mr. Bates?
Thank you, Mr. DuBois. The state requires every year that we review our routes and safety. What a lot of this is, is we might have students who move in and out of the district, and there's certain laws and regulations that we have to follow, like on state highways in the inner states, we have to pick up door side. So again, this is just presenting to the board, being in compliance with the state, that we have reviewed our safety for the transportation department.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Lynn, I, Lynn, second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Asking your approval for the donations that were presented.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor? NEOLA policies.
So these are NEOLA policies that are updates from state or federal law changes that have taken place. We were given these in July after, or I think, actually, it was after we submit our board docs, so we are now submitting that to you now. It is recommended by NEOLA that we go over this as a first-read approval, so I'm asking for your approval of these NEOLA updates.
How many reads do we have?
So Greg.
Second.
Harry.
Any questions?
At this time, are there changes need to be made to our handbooks or any of the documentation based on these preceding policies?
From a standpoint of handbooks, I don't think we really need to change anything other than these policies for right now. We can, obviously, the policies supersede our handbooks anyways, but we can comb through any of those changes. For example, the fifty-two, fifty-two-hundred, the attendance one, we'd already made that change in our handbook with the students, but the one on the human sexuality, we don't have like that in our handbook to-
I guess the other question's our curriculum.
Yeah, and no, there's nothing that I can see that we would change in our handbook from that standpoint, other than, you know, we'll update our curriculum on the website. We'll have, I know they're working on a consent form once that stuff gets approved and so on and so forth. So those are some of the changes that we're going to be making, but I don't think there's anything that is immediately needing to be changed in a student handbook or a staff handbook at this time.
How many reads do we have?
This is, typically, we do, we have up to three. We've done two, but since these are just all law changes, they're recommending that we do it in one read.
So our motion was to approve it on first read, which is not normal, but that's what we were asked to do, and I made the motion.
So the human sexuality issue is not going to be a problem?
That's, that's what, why we're reviewing that, because that's typically, that's something that is required now, that that specific part of that curriculum is now reviewed and approved by the board, so that's why we- approved by the board, so that's why we brought the high school one, we'll bring the middle school one to you. That's what's new in the policy. It's not changing what we actually teach in human sexuality, other than, I think, consent is now a requirement, and the video for the fetal development is a requirement. So some of those pieces changed in the policy, but it's not anything on philosophy, I guess, of human sexuality.
That's what my question partly is, you know, the video, the pictures, I mean-
And that's why those are-
Where's that going to go in age-appropriate?
Those are, that's why we have them on a 30-day review. And so then, once that 30-day review comes, then we will vote to approve those. So the material that we provided tonight, as you look through that, as the community looks through that, if there are things that we don't want in that, or if we think there's a better resource, that's why we'll have that 30-day review for that material.
So even though we have this approval, this read, we're going to be able to adjust it then?
Oh, yeah, we're, this is, with the mandatory curriculum is just, and the policy is saying, we are going to review human sexuality curriculum, period. That's what the, that's what the policy is. Then, as we review the material as a board, we will have those discussions over the next 30 days, and then that will get board-approved, or the board will modify, or reject, or whatever, based off of what you review.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Personnel.
Asking your approval for the personnel presented in front of you.
My move, to accept the personnel.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor? Professional development.
Asking for your approval for the professional development presented.
Sub move.
Second. Any questions? All in favor? Nanas, you guys are all right. Board member roundtable, we'll start with Harry tonight.
Thank you, Kyle. You've done some amount of work with it, and that obviously has a great impact on our school, so thank you for doing all you can to get us financially solid. Thank you, administrative, for being here.
Also, thank the staff and everybody that's been involved in starting the school. I mean, it's a great operation, and we have got it set in a decent place where it runs well every time. That's wonderful. You guys work hard, and like you said, the hours that people put in, don't realize what it takes to do it. And also, congratulations on the sponsorship award. That's great, Western, good job.
Pretty much what the guys said, plus Craig, thank you for letting me help with the iPad distribution. Maureen, thank you. It was way too much fun.
You're always welcome to come back and do it again.
Be glad to.
What about pickup?
I just wanted to say congratulations on the start of a new school year, and selfishly, I'm really excited to complete a full academic year here at Western.
Okay, I just wanted to say I appreciate Cody DeHaven getting up and giving his heartfelt remarks. I know when I started out teaching, it was, I made $17,000 a year, whopping. And I'm also not surprised about those buses. I mean, transportation, we ought to be able to sell our used buses for more now, I would think. I also like to say how much I appreciate the donations that came in. It looks like the middle school benefited quite a bit this month from those. Kyle, you gave up being a social studies teacher and a principal to do this job. I don't know why, but thank you.
What everyone else said. Grateful for another school year. Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work you guys have put in, not only the last couple weeks, but over the summer as well. I know we had a couple hiccups, I think, with the pickup line, but I think that next day was like perfect. So really, I want to say thank you. I know Chris and I got your email about proper procedures for pickup, so thank you for being diligent about that as well. So, and that's always a hot topic for some reason, so I do want to say thank you. Flick, good to have you back, bud. I'm glad you had extended vacation. But it was really cool to see the kids succeed the way they did and really represent our whole community, so that's all I got.
It's at all, we need a juror.
Make a motion to a juror. Second.
We are a juror. Thanks for coming.